Have a camera.
It's like Dave's on Zoom. Yep, we're good. All right.
Then I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mocker.
Here.
Graylow.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
T Z. Hammond.
Here.
And any conflicts of interests? To be declared. Hearing none, we'll go on to the approval of the agenda. Any items to be added?
Want to approve? Second?
It is a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Yeah, I'm not hearing your voice, Dave.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, gotcha. All right, thank you. Any visitors to be heard? So, next item on the agenda, Lane, if you want to. Any comments on the quarterly activity report?
Yeah, Carrie got that all out to you, so.
Looks good. You're a busy guy.
It's just the state, it's just widget counting more than anything.
Busy doing paperwork.
Yeah, yeah, that's quite a bit of it. I'll answer any questions if you have them, otherwise just means approved.
Move to authorize the chairman to sign.
Activity report, yes, second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And local emergency planning committee and the drone committee.
Yep, part of a transparency thing is to have you all approve the rosters each year for those. So we finally got them all, took a little bit longer this year with L A P C. Finally got them all finalized, I guess, so. If you approve all the members, we're good to go and it'll also be up on the website and all of that, no contact information, they still have to go through me, but it's at least showing that there's what citizens are involved.
Great.
Let's approve those committee rosters.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the rosters. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else?
That's all I had, just the signature page, if you could get that to me yet this morning, so I can get it submitted, technically it was supposed supposed to be submitted last week, so, but I was training, but.
If you want to sign it quick, I think I have to sign it too. Should be just a single sheet, I think that's in there. First thing, once I got this coming off my copier.
Nope.
No.
So I'll come up to your office after.
Yeah, after, we'll sign it after and I'll send it to you.
All right, next up, Rod, purchase agreement for a new blader.
It's okay, we'll make it as painful as possible.
Yeah.
No, as painful as possible.
All right. Um, so we're planning on in my budget, buying a blade this year to replace the old one we have still on hand and a new V plow and a new wing. Before winter ended this year, we had two of our wings go down, the actual mast on the side of the machine wore out, about the only thing that I guess is repairable if you cut it all apart and weld it all back together and build up the inside, but that's not cost effective, so we figured we better get all three wings, this, those wings we've had since oh eight. And last year was kind of tough on snow equipment, apparently, we didn't realize that until they started breaking down after the first year, we're down to one wing for a couple of them snowstorms. So I don't want to get caught like that again. And if we if we buy them with the blade, the V plows, I don't think I've ever blown a V plow, as far as I know, these V plows have been around as long as I've been here. And this one's pretty tweaked and we can't get it straight, so it gouges into gravel. But the other two we got are fine, but if we purchase it all through Sourcewell, we save like twenty-two thousand dollars, which is almost a wing. I think the wings were twenty-eight thousand, and that, you know, includes the mast, all the arms and everything, so. Worked with Butler and they said that they could do that. And of course, Butler, these are going to be Balderson wings, but of course Butler is the dealer for Balderson, that's why we could get it on with the caterpillar and our Sourcewell thing, so. If you think, I mean, it's a lot of money, and I have it in my budget, and we're going to get, you know, kind of station it out, see this fall if we needed another wing, but it just kind of all fell in our lap. And I think this is a good, this is a good deal.
Is there no trade, are we trying trading anything?
No, we'll probably, probably sell them, the counties can maybe use the moldboard, but the moldboard, the actual wing part of it won't interchange with the new ones. And they're pretty beat up, we welded on them and, I mean, they take a lot of beating those wings.
But I mean the motor grader.
No, the motor grader, we're gonna, we'll do like we did before, actually, I've had three counties.
Okay.
Get a hold of me, we'll do a seal bid this time, or I think last one we did was did we do it through George?
I don't remember.
Yeah, I believe so, that was in
Like Bonham County.
Twenty, well, Bonham County made us an offer, but you guys didn't think it was enough, so. But I got a couple of counties up north that are interested, they you know, everybody's looking for, like, they use it, they'll use it for a backup blade.
What's it worth roughly?
Boy, you know, I thought the other one was worth more, I, somewhere is in that sixty-five to seventy thousand.
Really?
Range, you know, last year they, or two thousand nineteen, I believe they figured it was worth seventy-five, somewhere is in there. And then we ended up putting it on the auction, a George kicked in the seller premium, they would have got, so we could get our, I think we had seventy-five thousand on it. And of course, this one's going to be older now than that one was, and then the blades are all we have three blades, eighteen, nineteen, and this will be a twenty-three. So that'll be updated for quite a while. Our trucks are updated pretty good, so we're getting there. Been a long, slow road, but that stuff went up so much, it's just ridiculous.
Everything.
But I thought I better, even though you already approved my budget, that's a big chunk of change, so I wanted make sure you knew what was going on, and your thoughts, you don't think it's a good idea, whatever.
No, it's in your budget, it's that's under your purview.
Yeah, do you need any action from us beyond just consensus?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
No, because we're not approving money where.
Yeah, we've already, yeah, you're.
I just wanted you to be aware, when you see almost half million dollar bill comes through, you don't. Probably not till July, if we're lucky.
How many hours is on the old?
It's getting up there around seven thousand. But it's all the other stuff that the hours on the engine, it's, we've it's nickel and dime us, and then you of course got to have Cat come down to fix it, but right now it's pretty good, except for all the bells and whistles and fuel buzzers and everything else keep going on.
So this one we're getting rid of, that's the one we bought used from Sioux Falls City?
Yes, that was what had a hundred and seventy-five hours. We bought those when Sioux Falls got rid of, so we got a pretty good deal on it. I don't remember exactly the cost, two hundred thirty, maybe we paid for it in twelve, two thousand, well.
Now Butler has a mechanic in town now.
Yep.
And we're only supposed to get charged mileage from Vermillion.
Yeah, well, if we need the Butler mechanic now, we hired a mechanic, so.
Warranty work, though.
Right, 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 yeah, we'll see, because you have to go to Sioux Falls to get the parts.
No, they're supposed to be shipped here.
Really?
He's supposed to be able to have, whatever part, if you called him today, he'll have it in the morning.
Okay.
So, and it's supposed to.
Yeah, I know, they got him from Ziegler.
I know.
Butler, he was out of Sioux City, worked out of Ziegler, Ziegler, and we can't deal with Ziegler, because we're in the Butler area, just like we can't deal with R D O, because we're in the Murphy area, so.
That's nice, I didn't know that, that they, they got to ship the parts in, that'll.
Yeah, we'll save us the mileage.
Right.
Parts are going to be higher, but we'll save it on mileage.
Mileage is is ridiculous. I mean, the fuel has come back down, but that surcharge never has went away.
But that, the other thing too, Rod, is if we, if your mechanic's going to work on stuff, parts are cheaper at Ziegler than Butler.
Yeah.
Which we can buy parts, right, from Ziegler?
I think we can, we should be able to. Because, because R D O is going to do the service on our backhoe now, because their service agreement with Murphy is done, so if, if we need it.
Yep.
Right.
All right, and we're gonna, we're gonna just sell the, the manual blade and V plow.
Yeah, we'll just.
Just sell those with the grader?
Probably, yeah. Just have to tell them that the wing is, it won't be hard for them to figure it out when you raise it up and lower the little pin comes out, and it just kind of is, is, you know, we haven't plowed snow, I have no idea how long they've been that worn out, till we start pushing snow this year again. It was hard, that wind, wind would go down, we had to keep using them, I don't know how many hours the wing got this year, but.
It was important this year, too.
Yeah.
To really push it out.
All right, well, it sounds like, like you're, you're good to go there. So propane quotes for Wakanda and Vermillion shots.
Move to approve Butch's propane.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the low bid of Butch's propane, dollar twenty-nine a gallon. Any further discussion?
Big difference between the quotes.
Yeah.
Shocking.
Yeah, now, that was the first part of that, April, I apologize, that got missed, I didn't get it in front of you till now, but it was quite a bit.
Yep. All right, hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carries. And let's see, we've pulled the right of way, is that right, for the application for Clay Rural Water, so, anything else for us?
Yeah, this I thought it was under the rural access funding, Star Township finally got back to me, we've been kind of waiting to give the money, because they're pretty vague, and they're a little better. They're taking out a sixty by sixty, or, let's see, they're taking out the box culvert, I guess they don't say how big the box culvert, but they're putting a sixty by sixty sixty inch arch by sixty feet long. So the total bill, and this is Pullman's estimate, is twenty-four thousand, six hundred, sixty-six dollars and twenty cents. But they did not take the twenty percent that they have to pay off the bill. So the award, according to my figures, should be nineteen thousand, seven thirty-two ninety-six with Star Township responsible for forty-nine hundred, thirty-three dollars and twenty-four cents.
Okay, but that's Bethel Township, right?
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah.
The twenty percent is, but they don't, they don't have that stated in here, they know about it, but they did not put it on.
Right, yeah, 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 so the actual award is nineteen thousand, seven thirty-two.
That's what I feel. Or that's the way my calculator come out, so.
All right.
And I would recommend you award it.
Well, we can't today, it's not on the agenda.
Oh.
Yeah, I did get it, I think it's done before I posted it yesterday, so.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not in the one in the packet, but I saw that email come.
Right, yeah, yeah, Carrie added it in time.
Yeah, it was before nine o'clock, so I went ahead and got it on there.
All right.
Well, move to approve the, was it nineteen thousand?
Seven hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-six cents.
I'll move to approve that amount to Bethel Township.
Second.
Hey, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, yeah, and, and I hope next year, if they're, I don't know if it will come in again next year, but I, I hope next year more townships will.
Yeah.
Take it seriously.
Three let's see, three or four contacted me, what they got to do. Plus they had a township meeting here in Town Union, play in Yankton at the four H building. And I guess L P A put that on, and I guess they had a pretty good turnout, I don't know how many was there, but whatever township we're on, yeah.
Wasn't valid.
So they've come forward, and I don't even remember the other two, so it's getting out there, so next year, and I don't have the actual total what's left in that account after you awarded Bethel. I think Bethels was like supposed to fifty.
Forty-seven, some.
Yeah, and I don't remember what the total was, like a hundred.
Forty-two.
Forty-something. So. And the only other one that'll put in was Garfield. And we're still waiting on engineering to figure out. And I'm, I'm going to have you, I'm going to put that on the agenda. Because I know it's a township thing, but it, the way it's looking, it's going to end up being one of our bridges. Because it's going to have to be wider you know, than twenty feet, unfortunately. So I just don't think we should have a a structure, we already took off one of our roads put back on. Ended up on a township road, but it's going to be our structure.
Yeah.
So I need to do a little more digging before.
Yeah, and it would be great to be able to spend to the bottom of that money, otherwise it'll get reallocated to other counties, and I do.
What money's left for four years before we have to make sure that amount is gone, so each year we'll be adding to it, but if they don't use it, there's some money there next year to, if more people apply, because that's about what we're going to get, maybe a little more, because we added a few bridges to the list, so the money coming in might be a little more, I don't, I don't see it being a big chunk.
Okay. Great. Anything else?
Not that, except for, we did hire the mechanic, he starts next Tuesday, or Monday, Monday, so.
Who's that?
Will Chief, Chief Chap Bowers. He was out here by the golf course.
Okay.
He was one that was, been doing all our service through interstate power, so I don't know, I haven't got any nasty emails or letters yet. It actually wasn't my idea to begin with, but yeah, I ran with it.
Coaching.
Yeah.
You can have all those emails sent to Larry now.
Right. And you know, by the way, I thought he got, you know, I was just too used to this. He was supposed to be the one explaining to you why the bill, why the bill on that cat thing was so high. Which is good. That's all we have. We did get some striping done to finish up two thousand twenty-two. They finally showed up, so I don't know, that's about all we got.
Coming down the plate right now.
Yeah.
All right.
Anything for us? Oh, we did get the washout filled in by the tabernacle.
Yeah.
Bridge from earlier, and we did put it down as Beema flooding, question mark, question mark, but I'm pretty sure we're it wasn't that much anyway, but it did wash out on, never seen that before. On the south side, southwest, east side.
Southeast side.
I mean, it, it right out the edge of the road was falling off and everything, hundred, two hundred feet? Hundred and fifty feet?
Two hundred feet.
In all the flooding we've had, but the water come off the hill so quick this year when the snow melted, it is, is terrible. But.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
And maybe, should we get Aina? Is she online?
We got Scott.
Oh, we got, okay. So we got updates on the M E P.
So here to talk about our first hurdle, so I'm going to try to make my terminology positive. It has, has to do with the whole abatement thing. So got to reach out, talking to abatement contractors. Got talking to Lynn, well, first, we reached out to the State Department of Natural Resources, this what's the name of that program?
Brownfields, perhaps?
Brownsfield, okay, program. And they paid for the survey, they'll also pay for the abatement, they'll cover the cost of the entire project.
Only on the asbestos side, right?
What's that?
Only on the asbestos side, was that?
And lead.
And lead, all right.
So to kind of give you a perspective, I've looked through the blueprints and I count eighty-one wall penetrations that are going to take place in that building. When the construction starts, I've asked J L G to look though, I don't know where, make sure my number's right. And, and we got one floor penetration that deals with asbestos, the rest, the rest can deal with the lead paint. So I talked to the individual that's in charge of this program, appear, and he's telling me that basically he feels the size of this project, they wouldn't have, would not have the funding to cover it. And they don't have any funding new funding available till September. And they can't start processing any paperwork because of the lack of funding till September. And once it hits his office, it goes to the State Historical Preservation Office for review or whatever. He says they have, he, they have to bring out a consultant for that paperwork. And that's thirty days over there. So we're looking at like October, November.
Best case scenario.
Best case scenario, you know, he's not telling me that, I'm just, I'm kind of putting the pieces of the puzzle game in my mind, and you know, we're going October, November. So I've talked to Lynn about it, and I reached out to some other asbestos, some other abatement contractors, because of one I've been talking to. He hasn't been returning phone calls. And he led me to believe that, oh, we just come in and do an encapsulant. Well, that's not the case. These other two firms are telling me, no. Not if you're doing a demolition, not if you're putting a hole through a wall. It has to be ground off down to the plaster. Or they just do the demolition themselves while they're there, which is a more cost-effective way to do it. Because when you start grinding it off, you know, obviously we're getting we're making a powder. You know, obviously containment has to go up anyway for each site. But then you start grinding that off, and you're starting to collect it in the barrels, and it's a thousand to twelve hundred dollars per barrel to dispose of it. So he says we're better off if we go with a company, his company in particular, which was V C I out of Minnesota, that they do the actual demo, they do the actual demo of the wall, making the holes. Because it's not as fine a powder and it doesn't break down as much, it can be you know, classified as household waste and go right to the landfill. And the other stuff he told me that kind of gives me nightmares on the cost is, you know, I have to give all, all my stats that's going to be on that site, I gotta do blood tests to see if their lead levels are, if it's a big enough project halfway through, I got to do it again. So I said, we're talking some serious, man, he goes, yes, lead is expensive, asbestos is nothing. I don't have an idea on the cost at this point. So I reached out to L and L and talked to the project manager, Evan, who'd be the project manager on this site here. And we were talking, having the conversation, tell, I told him what was going on, I said, well, he goes, we did a, this work at the Cherokee County Courthouse, and they said that was, that was asbestos abatement, that was fifty grand. I, I think we're going to be over this, you know, I don't know that for a fact, but and I said, well, let's just do a scenario, let's just say we push this whole project back three hundred sixty-five days. And, you know, we all know what's going to happen then, inflation. So inflation can be more than the you know, is it going to be the same as the abatement, is it going to be a break even? You know? You don't know where they know, it's kind of a wild card thing going on right now.
What'd he say about pushing it back? Three hundred sixty-five?
He, he. He, he. He didn't say it couldn't be done. The conversation come, well, we could purchase the equipment now and get the equipment on site. But he said the problem doing that is your warranty starts if it hits, it's on site. You know, we'd be out of. Three hundred sixty-five days, we'd be out of warranty on the equipment, which. You know, could, may or may not be a problem. Generally, it's not unless you have like defective piece here or there. So you might have to eat something there.
What's your recommendation?
What's that?
We have to wait till they can give us a price on what it's actually gonna cost.
Yeah, I think so. I think it's kind of scary to pull the trigger right now, like, which we kind of already have, but. Not knowing the cost of this, I just envision it's not gonna be real cheap because. Every wall they have to penetrate, there's two sides, so that's a containment going up. Containment up on this side, that side, punch a hole. Go to the next one, every place there's a containment, you have to shut that office down.
What happens if we cancel the contract with L and L?
What's that?
What happens if we cancel the contract with L and L?
That I don't know, I didn't, I didn't ask that question of Lynn or. You know, Lynn's kind of on. You know, of course, everyone wants to forge forward with it, I get it, you know, from their end, but.
Yeah, because they don't get paid unless they do something.
Alright, but. I know, how much are we gonna have to eat if?
Right.
You know? That's, we don't know. So I, I have, I, I sent the data what I have out to these two companies, I talked to the gentleman in charge and. Sent them the reports, sent them the pictures I had. What I knew, you know, eighty-one penetrations. Uh, I'm working with Glenn right now, she's getting the data together on the dimensions of these penetrations. So, we can probably get a pretty good sound number, I'm hoping in the next, I hope in seven days, but.
Did they think they could do any other work?
There's other work they could do, they could demo out the boiler. Demo out the boiler, put in a new boiler. They could take all the fan coil units out. Cause there's no piping, you know, we're not adding any additional piping. There might be a little piping right there by the units they have to do. So fan coils could come out, the new ones could go in. So, we could have heat and air conditioning up, up and running. We wouldn't have the backup heat that's gonna be in each pan coil unit, cause that requires electrical, which is probably might. Might require new conduits, I'm not sure on that. You know, they might be able to even get that wired in. But the, you know, the ventilation and the fire suppression. Cause the big thing where we're gonna be making these penetrations.
Yeah, well, it sounds like we just need some more information about costs.
I just wanted to. What's going on, what's going on here?
So they could go ahead with the H V C, and that's. That's gonna be best done on that. All. Switch over from air conditioning to uh. Heating anyway. We don't wanna be doing the, all this stuff in the dead of winter anyhow, or dead of summer. Those parts, but uh. We went ahead with the H V C stuff. And uh. Figured out what, what's, you know, I, I'd say, see, see how L and L feels about that part.
Okay.
Going ahead with that, and then get our numbers on what the. Penetrations, those are all for the ventilation system. And the. Fire suppression.
You know, we talked about, we talked about. Doing, we talked in the past about doing this in phases as far as. Sections of the billing, maybe we need to look at those phases from a mechanical viewpoint, like you said, H back.
Yeah.
You know, we're not. If, if we take the ventilation out of there, it's just heating and air conditioning, we're not putting any holes anywhere.
Right.
You know, we can get the. New rooftop unit set for the courtroom and. You know, there's things that's can be getting done, I believe. It's not gonna require these penetrations, you know, and maybe, maybe the whole. The whole ventilation system, pressure ventilation and the fire suppression was gonna create all these penetrations, you know, maybe that's a startup. Of a year from now, and maybe they work on this other stuff till then, you know. Or maybe.
Could be part of a year, couldn't it?
What's that?
It wouldn't have to be a full year.
No, it wouldn't have to be, no, as soon as. As soon as that Browns, that money shows up for that Brownsfield.
Yeah.
You know.
That could be done late winter.
Yeah, right.
Early, or spring next year.
And, and they, they handled the whole thing, they.
Yeah.
Have several contractors they work with, they say, okay, you're going to Lake County Courthouse, that's what you're gonna do, da da da. This is a sweet deal for us.
Yeah.
Real sweet.
Even the backup heat uh. Electrical. You know, that, that goes into the fan coils and the wiring up of that part.
Right.
Come in later.
And, you know, and I don't think that, I'd have to do some more talking with. Lynn and whoever, I don't think that requires. Penetrations for new conduit, I think they're pulling through the same conduit, the same way of setting those, setting those new boxes in the. In those hallways.
Yeah.
You know, I'll do some more legwork on that end of it too. And see, do some more talking.
Are we guaranteed to get enough money in abatement?
That's the way it sounds.
That if they approve you, they'll approve the whole project?
Right. Nope.
What happens if they don't approve us?
Didn't say anything about that, I'll call and talk to him some more. I'll call and get a little more information on what the actual steps of the process are, if there's any. You know, if there's a chance we can get denied.
Cause we spent all the money out of the building project now. There's no, there's no extra in there now.
Oh, there's, there's still some.
From the two point seven, that the project's gonna cost?
There's still some from that original million.
How much?
I wanna say like six hundred thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's good to have that. In that fun, because with projects like this, you just never know.
Right.
Stuff comes up.
There's a certain amount of contingency that's built into the two point seven too, so.
I'll keep doing legwork and researching and getting the information gathered. Guess on a good note, I talked to the city about relocating offices over there, I talked to Mr. Prescott. And he's basically said, we're willing to do whatever we can for you guys. Um, they got a large conference room we can use. If we need to put temporary large office over there, they got a small conference room we can use. Use the chambers for courtroom if we want. City needs storage, we got storage in the basement, so. He said if, if there's an office that can be relocated to one of their cubicles on the main floor, they got several cubicles that are empty. They could put a person over there. So.
Nice.
That's nice, at least I got some good.
I happened to buy when they were just finishing, finishing out the hallway, John assured me that it wouldn't be over a million a month.
At least there's a budget, yeah.
I said, I said, well, would be a cost involved, and he said. Well, maybe you can, you know. Supply some of the toiletry stuff. I'm not sure, my role totally ever fit into your dispenser, you know, it's everything specialized nowadays.
Well, that's pretty minimal cost.
Yeah, kick in some money for their. Bathroom items.
Right.
Anything else, any other questions?
Yeah, that, doing it by. Item, you know, might give you enough flexibility that could work anyway.
Okay. Alright, well, I'll keep looking into it.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks.
Thanks. Thanks, Scott.
Appreciate it. Alright, Aina, Monaya.
Morning. You did send out the.
Yep. Okay. Looks good.
So I think we, we would like to hire right now before I'm gone, so that. We can all work on training and then they can still be out in the field and there's somebody in the office with a new person. Because. So I guess we just. Are asking for your permission to go ahead and start advertising for that position.
Okay.
I, I moved to authorize their office to start advertising for that.
Hey, there's a motion in a second to proceed with advertising the position, is there any discussion?
We, did we figure out anything on salary on that at this point?
Um, they would start at a, a grade seventeen, which is seventeen ninety-four an hour.
Unless, unless they're certified, if they're already certified, then it would.
Then they would be stepped, uh, they would be a, a higher grade.
So if it's a beginner, it's what, assessor one, and then if it's a, somebody with. With certification, then it'd be a.
And if they have G I S experience, it would be a different grade also. But um. That. I would love to be able to say we can find somebody that's certified and has G I S experience, but. I, I have a dream world that I live in. So, but yeah, that's. That's our, already in the schedule.
Alright, so.
And it's in the budget already, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it will be.
So, I'm just, I'm just making sure that we had thought of that part.
Good thinking, yep.
Um, and then, um, we're going to be gone to conference June thirteenth through the sixteenth. And Jean is going to come in. And take care of the.
I don't think we did.
What?
We didn't vote yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, we've got a motion in a second, are there any other questions? Yeah, any other questions, so, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Aye. Dick started talking and I thought you were done.
Sorry, bad interruption.
Okay, okay, so Jean is gonna come in, and hopefully he will be just. A few hours a day with the, the new person, cause even if they, we do get somebody that's certified. To go to conference right away is probably a waste of. And somebody that doesn't have any clue. Is, so. So it'll be just Kyle, Lanaya and I going to conference. And then, um, pictometry is going to be doing a lunch and learn on May twenty-fourth. In this room, we might have to set up some tables a little bit different from eleven thirty to one thirty. So. And then, um, our sales. We have been using Bossenova and now Lisa Midman has transferred to Triman. So, they're not in Bossenova, so it's going to be more work for our office to get them into Bossenova so we can transmit them to state. Just. It's gonna take us longer to do that and. Trying to get out and get some field work done, it's. We're gonna have a busy next couple of months. Extremely busy. So. And they have started the review out in Garfield. So, they're gonna start going door to door out in Garfield, they've been sent letters. That we're gonna be out there. And stuff, so. Anything else?
I think that covers it. Unless you guys have questions on anything.
Questions?
And even though the city's minutes said this morning, they recaps it, I was working till July thirty-first, I was retiring then, I'm retiring June thirty. Not that I'm not opposed to coming back and helping, but. So, okay.
Thank you. Is Chad Anderson here? Alright.
Morning, members of the commission, Chad Anderson from Wakanda. Um, I found out last week that I have a lien against some property. From costs associated with a court appointed attorney. For Devin Anderson. Uh, I'm here to refute my portion of that bill, I guess, and asking for. I don't, I don't dispute the fact that there is a bill, but I was never involved with. Any information involving the case, and I don't think I should have to keep. Responsible for part of the bill. And I can share the bill with you if you guys don't have a copy of that.
No, I, I, I think we all, we all believe you, I think, unless anybody else wants to see it, Alexis?
Frustrating thing we ever dealt with in our life. And it was.
Yeah.
Over and over, uh, by Jason Rumpke that, uh, he worked for my son, he didn't work for me.
So that is the nature of a court appointed attorney for a juvenile in a matter, and I think that's very important. It's something that, when we have an attorney represent any individual, but including a child. The person paying the bill retained or not is not the person who drives what those best interests are. The court appointed attorney for a juvenile is representing the child in their best interest. Times they'll have conversations with the parents, those types of things, maybe not. Um, it really depends on the individual and what they think is best for their client. So, there may be a fiduciary. Obligation by the parent to pay for that attorney of the child. But that does not necessarily entitle them to the same legal advice that's being provided to the child. There's statutory obligations for parents when it comes to court appointed attorneys' fees for their children. Just like there are any other, uh, statutory obligations to provide financially for those children. We as a society. Incur the costs of every aspect of raising a child. Um, those are the costs borne by the parents of the child, and I think that's where the statute, statutory obligation is rooted. In the parents being financially obligated to pay for these bills. I don't know why Mr. Anderson should be treated differently than any other parent who's financially responsible for this. Um, and so, it's statutory, such early required, if he wanted to dispute that, I think the court was a proper avenue. I recall vaguely when I started. An office here, Mr. Anderson coming to the office a number of times, very frustrated with our deputy state's attorney at the time wanting to dispute. This matter. And beyond that, I don't recall anything further involving that, I don't know what the facts and circumstances, and I don't really think that they're relevant. He's financially responsible for his son and whatever brought him into the justice system. So that's the, the state's attorney's position on that, and would ask you to not deviate, I think it would set a bad precedent for other, uh, parents.
So Alexis, I expect you might have experience with this, is this, uh, is forgiving a lien like this something that we have done in your? Or would this be the, the first, uh, first time?
This would be the first I'm aware of ever doing that.
Yeah. It does sound to me like this is a, a civil matter, um, that you would have to take up. Um, in, in the courts. Um, it, you know, it's, it's not really a. You know, it's just not something the commission does. Um, you know, we, we don't forgive liens, um, in general, when property gets sold. Uh, you know, the proceeds of the sale of the property would, um, would pay the lien, but normally we, we. We don't forgive liens, we, you know, it seems unfair to other taxpayers to do that. So, we, we, I don't think we have an avenue, um, to help you, I think the courts are probably your best avenue for relief here.
Get a chance to respond?
Sure.
We know which property there's a lien against.
Um, Aina Peterson would know that.
You'll expect to be, the treasurer would know that.
Oh, the treasurer would know that, okay, so. So treasurer's office is second floor and.
Because if it's the, if it's the, if it's the home. I signed a quick claim deed on that in July of twenty sixteen. So I am not legally responsible for that property. I'm just asking for my name to come off of this. My ex-wife's name can stay on it.
Again, that, that's not something that.
Then, because you, you guys are the ones who put a lien on the property, so that's why I'm coming back asking. Asking for that.
Yeah, Alexis.
Alexis responding, what's in the best interest of the court? If my son was on trial, wouldn't you bring his counselor in to talk about his mental health issues? With the court, I guess that would be a good start.
I absolutely will not discuss, and I think it's wildly inappropriate to discuss. Any juvenile matters and the proceedings that occurred in juvenile court here in an open meeting. Beyond that, I think it's completely counterproductive to the notion that Mr. Anderson should be excused. When he wants his ex-wife held liable for the child's bills. So I think that just underscores the point that both parents are financially responsible for the child.
And lastly, on my part, I'm not his father. That was disclosed to him in March of twenty fifteen and doesn't disclose to me until. December of twenty sixteen, when I read the court resource officer's report that we had for five minutes. That was how much time I was allowed to discuss this case with my son, or about this case with anybody else. And yes, I did stop into the state's attorney's office multiple times. It wasn't involving this matter, it was involving another separate matter that was a. Uh, the payment that we had to make to, uh, the clinic, the. The court ordered us to pay a hundred dollars each to his parents to this place in, uh, Clorinda, Iowa for his. Incarceration and. I went to dispute that because it wasn't based on what, on income-based, like it was supposed to follow in the court order. And I just tried to tell the state's attorney's office about it multiple times, and it was turned away. And yes. There's a bill here, I should not be responsible. I had to find out court dates from my daughter. Who was living with her mother. I'd get a text message from him. Devin has an arraignment hearing tomorrow. Oh, did you know Devin is being sentenced tomorrow? And I'm responsible for half of the bill. Like I said, if I would have been allowed to bring in anything to this discussion on, uh, possible, uh, uh. People to testify on this, absolutely. I wouldn't have been involved with the court officer, court resource officers report, it was spot that thick. And I had zero input on it, interviewed my ex-wife. Not asking for any sympathy, I'm not asking for, uh, what's fair is fair. And laws are made to be followed, and they also find, uh. There are exemptions to the rules sometime, and I know Ms. Tracy may have not run into like this, anything like this before, but she also hasn't been. In the office of. State's attorney for more than what, six years?
Yeah, I, forgiving liens is not something that the commission does. And um, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't see that succeeding. Um, but you do have other, other avenues of relief, which are civil, and. You know, unless somebody else has. I, you know, I would, I would suggest you pursue those civil, those civil remedies. I, I, I think that's your best shot. And you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, we, we can't help you, but I appreciate your, your coming in. Thank you. Right, so we've got legislative audit. Alright. So you're David Widler?
Yes.
Welcome.
Good morning. As I said, my name is David Widler. I'm here with Legislative Audit to conduct the closing conference for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one audit. Uh, I believe Carrie had passed out things that I gave her today. So.
We have one commissioner that's over Zoom, so he hasn't seen it, but the rest have their paper copies.
Okay, well, if he has any questions, just let me know. Okay, so the first thing that I would like to discuss with you is called the Board of Governance Letter. Accounting standards require that we communicate certain things with the board at the closing conference, and. Um, the first thing is the qualitative aspects of accounting practices, uh, management. And to clarify, management is the Board of Commissioners and all the department heads, specifically the auditor and the treasurer. Are responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies. Uh, in our opinion, you guys have selected appropriate accounting policies. On the second page, we're required to disclose any significant difficulties that we encountered in the audit. There were none. Building off of that, there was no significant disagreements with management during the audit. Uh, we were required to discuss corrected and uncorrected misstatements on your financials. There are no material unposted audit adjustments, and any of those that are not material, I will be discussing with Carrie after the meeting. Since she was out sick yesterday. Uh, I'm gonna skip the next one and come back to it. To our knowledge, there was no consult, consultations with any outside, uh, accountants. And then there were no other findings or issues noted that were not disclosed in the management letter, which we will get to after, here in a little bit. Yeah, so going back to the management representations. Betty has a letter from you guys that contain all of the management representations. Uh, essentially, it just confirms that. Everything that was discussed with us or given to us is true. All the transactions that the county has entered into have been recorded and are presented on the financial statements. Um, you guys aren't aware of any fraud, waste, or abuse. That it's management's responsibility for the proper and fair presentation of the financial statements. Um, the implementation of any controls over the presentation, um, any internal controls over. Any internal controls to detect, prevent, or deter fraud from occurring, things of that nature, compliance with state laws. It's a pretty long letter. There's thirty-some items, and the last one has every other letter of the alphabet under it, so. Uh, if you've been a commissioner before, it's essentially the same letter that's the last audit. Have to answer any more questions about it.
So. We wanna take a few minutes. To read what we've got, and then, um, what I'll, I'll need is, um, um, motion to sign. The, uh, the letter.
Okay, I would like to clarify, you are the only one with a copy of that.
Oh, I'm the only one?
Yes, nice.
Did I put that in your packets?
It may be in your packets, I'm not aware.
I think I, well, it wasn't. I mean, I got it, did any, any, so it starts, we are providing this letter in connection with your audit. And it, um, is to be signed by the chair and the auditor, and as, um, David's suggestion, it's got, uh. Yeah, quite, quite a few pages. You got it?
Yeah.
It, it, it is, it is technical, but, but it's essentially about transparency and processes and. Making sure that we actually all know and are paying attention to what's going on from, uh, week to week.
Got a lot of technical accounting representation letter or items in there. As, the biggest ones there is that you guys are aware of the things as management that you're supposed to do, that you guys have done them. Making sure that you guys are staying within the boundaries of state laws regarding the financial aspects of the county. Any grant agreements.
Yeah, and then, um. Carrie is a co-signer. So really, it's, it's asking, do we understand that these things are our job?
So on the second. Hamlet. Where it says deficiencies noted in internal control, which are material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Is that actually what you found? Was that the, you, um, you were given inaccurate information?
I was not given inaccurate information. Uh, every March, Carrie prepares your financial statements in accordance with state laws. The, we found these, this, um, we found enough. Material misstatements, so we thought it would be appropriate to bring it to you guys' attention, and we can go over that, uh, next letter. Here in a little bit, or we can go over now if you would like.
Probably, so, so we'll, we'll run through here, make sure we're, I'm, I'm suggesting we run through and make sure that we're comfortable with the thirty points here. And then we can, we can address that, because that doesn't really have bearing on this, and then we'll, and then we'll pick that one up, does that sound?
Uh, that works.
Other commissioners, yeah, okay.
We can discuss this in whatever order you guys would agree on.
So would you, you wanna put that in the form of a motion, definitely?
Sure. I move that we, uh, well, I, I guess I, uh, first was just interested in, uh, uh. Re- reading all thirty points of this, I apologize, I hadn't done that previously, so before, before I moved to authorize you.
Okay.
Although I guess maybe that's discussion for all of us to read this, but I just was requesting a, a moment or two, um, to, to complete these.
Why don't we do that, and then y'all can indicate when you're, when you're ready.
Apologize for not having read that previously, and with that, I follow with a, a, a motion to authorize, uh, the chairperson to, um, to sign. The, what's the title of this letter, this letter?
Uh, it's the letter of representation.
Letter of representation.
You're welcome.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to sign, authorize the chair to sign the letter of representation. Are there, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, motion carries. And then do we need a few more minutes to read the other? The letters that came to us this morning? So would, uh, maybe you'd like to review the, the letter? Internal controls and certain one?
Yep, I was gonna discuss this one more in detail, this is. This is the one where we communicate any significant findings to you. So during the audit, we evaluated your internal controls to provide us with a. Basis for giving our opinion on your financial statements. However, we do not express an opinion on your internal controls. Accounting standard, or auditing standards require that we discuss. Certain items with you if we deem them important enough. Uh, so, the first page. Um, discusses. The differences between a material weakness and significant deficiency, and what is, is and what isn't in internal controls. And then what is a material and immaterial. Violation of laws. Um, essentially, the difference is. The material weaknesses and significant deficiencies and the material violations of state laws are. Required to be, in addition, discussed with you included in our audit report as a written finding. And then the not material weakness and not as. Excuse me. And then you can have those that are important enough that you guys need to be aware of, but aren't important enough to be. Communicated as a written finding, and we have. A couple, one, that is, will be disclosed in the audit report, and then two that will not. So on the second page. I will draw your attention to the deficiencies noted in internal control, which are material weakness or significant deficiencies. Which are included in the schedule of current audit findings in the audit report. And the audit finding that we have is your, the internal controls over a county for cash, cash assets were inadequate. Resulting in dis, diminished assurance that the county's financial transactions were properly recorded, and its assets were adequately safeguarded. And that will, that is the one audit finding that will be included in the audit report. What I found when reconciling your guys' cash and going over the other cash testing that we do. Uh, the cash reconciliation that is being performed by the county does not reconcile your cash. The bank records to the amount of cash recorded in the general ledger. And then another thing that I found that helped raise this two written finding is that the auditor's account with the treasury report that Carrie. Is required to give to you by state law monthly. There were. Fourteen or fifteen. There was a good number of reports that were not recorded in the minutes as being given to the board. And that report also was not balancing with the treasurer's office, with her daily balance, or to the general ledger. Building off of that, we are required to give recommendations on that. And they're pretty basic. The recommendation for the cash, cash reconciliation is that. The county and either Carrie or Rhonda can, can do this. Is to perform a cash reconciliation of the. Cash at the in, institutions of which you guys have cash at, so the banks and your credit unions. And reconcile that back to the amount of cash recorded in the general ledger and do that monthly. And then the recommendation for the auditor's account with the treasurer is that the. Is that Carrie reconciles her books with the, and her books are the general ledger. Reconciles that with Rhonda's. Cash balance that she has at the end each month, and then. Um, gives that report to you guys monthly.
So I guess I'm confused about that, because that is, that is what that report is, is Rhonda and I comparing our balances.
And I discovered that you, the report that you were giving does not agree to the amount of cash recorded in the general ledger.
So. That report plus our. Banking and Boston Nova. And the general ledger, they have a spreadsheet. That they use every month Nicole and Rhonda and then Rhonda and I use that cash um. Reconciliation report, so. I guess I'm just a little confused because typically. Like that all has to match up and if it doesn't, they know what it is.
The otters account with the treasury reports that you gave me?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, the total amount of cash on there does not agree with the total amount of cash recorded in your general ledger.
To what dollar amount?
I don't have that with me, but I can go get that if you would like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll take me about. Five minutes because I will print out a copy for all of you. Okay.
Right. We could, we wanted to just do vouchers right now. During this reading. Period. We could do vouchers right now.
Get those out of the way.
Get those out of the way.
And those are all really, oh, excuse me. Related to the jail project. Um. They're getting a little antsy for their money and I know the bond money is going to be coming. Um, we have some extra in that building project fund that we can. Pay that out of and then bond money that's here. I just didn't want them to say, hey, we're not working on the project anymore until we get paid.
Um, so. Oh, Travis, you're on that committee, have they, have they completed the work to the extent that they're?
Yeah, everything they're asking for is.
I grabbed all the invoices if that helps.
Yeah.
They've all gone to the tax office first.
Okay.
And now this also includes. The city's thirty percent, you know, at the end. We're gonna end up paying the whole bill upfront. And they're gonna have to step, you know, they'll come in and pay their thirty percent or whatever that square footage ends up being at the end.
Yep.
I figured that was gonna be the easier way to do this since we had to take the bond for the whole amount anyway.
Exactly. Yeah. Um, and, and so you're also satisfied that Tegra's bill is.
Yeah.
Is legit, okay, um. Your. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hey, motion, motion carries. That was a spectacular song.
Yeah.
It was, I was kind of holding off because I thought. All this would be done at the end of February and then we could just. Head and it kind of kept dragging out, so. I had a conversation with. Dick towards the end of last week and. Thought it should be done soon, but.
Yeah.
It's like, I know they're getting a little antsy and I'm like, I know, I don't like that that's sitting there either, so.
Yeah, yeah, and the Fed's meeting again. Soon.
So.
Now the only thing we have left is the letter that may.
Okay. I'm just a little confused by this because I. We spend. Days everybody making sure everything balances and if it doesn't. We're checking with Patty to see why it doesn't, so.
Yeah, I, that's. Experience in my. Yeah. Should. You, you guys worked really hard on that, I, I can say, yep, I can say, I can say that.
During any given month, we, we can have pinpointed.
Oh.
You know what it is and whether it's gonna. Wash the next month and all of that, so.
Yeah.
Well, I ain't got a chance to talk to him before the meeting, so. That's on yesterday.
Our, our deposit institutions are a matter of public record, correct? Which, which we actually, but I can say yes. I know you guys, uh, I, I've been on the phone and, and you guys work really hard to make sure every single, every single item is. Uh, addressed, so I'm. I'm hunting for you, so.
When it doesn't, it's often a. Timing of transactions.
Yeah.
And I don't know. But I wouldn't.
That's why I said usually if there's an amount, we know. What it is and whether next month will be. So.
Yeah.
Does he compare previous audits?
They start their balances and stuff with the previous one and then. But yeah, they have all the old audit reports.
Is this something that's come up in any previous reports to your knowledge or?
That's why I want to know the dollar amount. Um, there is one bank that Rhonda has a problem reconciling with.
Oh. And maybe that's. That's what the deal is, I guess I didn't really get to talk.
But it's a. It's not a, it's not a large dollar amount, this and it's. Neither of them are coming to an agreement on what that is.
I did say he was off by about seventeen hundred at one point, but then I didn't. I didn't know. Where he was at with that, so. It does make it hard when they have them here and then they pull them to other. Projects for them. Bring them back and pull them away again, so it's. It's difficult and get lost in the process.
We have a request from an Aaron Reich or Reich. Um, to talk about vehicle registration Clay County at our next board of commissioners meeting. So. I, I, that's, that's all he's given, he's asked for two to five minutes. And he's. Asked to be on the agenda, I offered him visitors to be heard, but he wants to be on the agenda.
But he's, he's gonna be at the next meeting.
Uh, well, he's, he's requested to be at the next meeting.
Be here in person.
Uh, yep. Okay. So maybe I'll stop by and talk to you Rhonda.
Yeah, I, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Okay.
Well, then I'll just wait for the agenda until you guys have had a chance to talk.
It is top morning, this is banking reconciliation. Second one is for the eyes.
And what is TDBV stand for?
Um, uh, the treasurer's daily balance book, I'm sorry. And then pool cash is the total general ledger cash.
So it's showing we're off fifteen dollars, is that correct?
So between the pool cash. And the one banking history report, yes, that one is off fifteen dollars. But the. Uh, the actual banking reconciliation for the end of twenty twenty one, you are, the report was off four hundred and sixty two thousand eight hundred and twenty three dollars and seventy three cents.
Okay, well, one, one place where fifteen dollars is, is sometimes. Well, I'm a former employee of a million federal credit, there's a fifteen dollars that's secured and never available when the account's open, so the uh. By county would own that fifteen dollars, but they would only have access to it if they closed the account and I have seen a lot of people. Um, get puzzled about why there's fifteen dollars not available for some reason the account, so just.
Okay, yeah.
Don't have anything to do with it, but just that number popped it in my mind, I know I've, I've been on the phone with people about that one a lot.
Right, no, no, that makes sense, but. I just kind of put all the information that I had available to me at the time in this spreadsheet.
And I think Rhonda and I determined that that was that fifteen dollars.
No, but the.
But I'm a little confused about the.
Yeah.
Or.
Where's that at? No.
I'm a little confused about that.
Um. It is technically in your account and it is recorded in the general ledger. It's just the. So the amount in the baking reconciliation column, that is the amount that the report that is run. From this up um. From your accounting records is reconciling to as your book balance.
So wondering if that's some of that. ARPA or CARES Act. And maybe that fund wasn't adding it in in the software.
That is a possibility, I cannot confirm, I would also. When I was trying to reconcile your guys's cash and I ran into this problem, I looked at the work my coworker did at Turner County. Because they run the same software. And her audit for twenty and twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, the number that it was reconciling to matched with their general electric cash.
Okay, so how do we find this?
Which doesn't necessarily. Because Patty set stuff individually for each county and if we didn't have something set up. To add in that fund. Then that would be where the missing piece could be.
Right. So the. Issue and the thing that caused the written finding is. No one was actually reviewing the report to make sure that it agreed. To the total amount of cash, the cash is there. It's not missing, it's just the report, the reconciliation is not being done properly. And with the reconciliation being one of the most important controls over cash, it's important that it gets fixed. Whether.
Okay, so who walks us through how? To do it then?
If you guys would like me to, I can walk you through how. Um. I don't have any. Like I said, I looked at the same report for Turner County who runs the same system. And there's worked perfectly, I think there's an issue with the way that the report is being run. And I think Rhonda and Kerry can sit down with Patty, right?
Yeah.
And figure out what the issue is.
Because I know Rhonda and I and Nicole. Work really closely every month to make sure that we're balancing and if we're not. We know usually what it is like that fifteen dollars, we were pretty sure was that credit even share. Um. And we're looking at. You know, the funds and the balances, so if there's a report that's not coming out right. Then I could see that being something that Patty could fix for us easily enough.
Right, and the same with that PT ninety two report with the, the software pulling the wrong information.
Yep. We had another, um, he's talking about a PT ninety two. It's a year end uncollected tax and for whatever reason, one of the years. The first page pulled the correct information, the second and third page pulled information from a different year. I don't know why Patty didn't know why. So. She went back and, and ran it again and it was right, so I don't know. I don't know. Um. There have been a few. Things like that that have happened and so we've been working on switching over to T tag, I think when she changes things in the software to try to make it. Friendly for the conversion, sometimes there's a glitch here or there, I don't, I don't know. So I mean, I don't have an explanation other than that I know that Rhonda and I check it very carefully each month. Um, there's a report that's not pulling right, we can definitely talk to Patty.
Uh, yes, I would just like to clarify. This. The four hundred and sixty two. Thousand eight hundred and some dollars is. Still in your guys's bank accounts, it is not missing, it's just the report. And the reconciliation is reconciling to a wrong number.
David, I'm confused by that, I know we've talked about it a little bit here in the office. But um. When Kerry and I, like you say, when we finish up our end of the month. My treasurer's daily balance. Bottom line. Matches what's showing in the bank account and it also typically matches the general ledger ending of the month balance. You know, like Kerry had stated, if we're off, we usually know what it's for, it's like the fifteen dollars. That had to do with a miscellaneous receipt that got receipted in at the end of the year and didn't carry over correctly in the bookwork or in the system, let's put it that way. So that one we know, but this large amount of money too, I don't understand that. But at the end of each month, the bank account, my balance sheet and the general ledger. Match, you know, the bottom line of the, of the general ledger. So I would appreciate knowing some way that we can double check this and find this missing number because according to what we're looking at. We. Everything is correct. I guess is what my point is, so I, I need to see what you're talking about and ways that we can look deeper into the system to see what we're missing.
I can certainly come revisit this with both you and Kerry or, yeah, you and Kerry after the meeting to. Show you what I'm looking at versus what I'm finding. Where I'm coming up with these variances.
That would be great, I'd really appreciate that.
Yes, that is perfectly fine, I.
That'd be really helpful.
Yeah. I'm not just trying to. Criticize without providing a solution or trying to help provide a solution and it may just end up being. The software is just running the report wrong. And that's not something I can help with, that's something the three of us that are Kerry and Rhonda. Have to sit down with Patty or have myself sit with the three of them and try to figure out what's going on.
And expected, uh, you know, likely anyone listening in today, reading the minutes later, you know, they, they maybe have some concerns about this, so I think that probably. Um, uh, putting on a future meeting an agenda item or after we've had that discussion. Um, to revisit it and then just explain uh, what the, what the appropriate resolution is, we decided for this to make sure that in the next audit, it's uh, it's no longer a material finding. Um, so that, that's something that I'd, I'd appreciate and I think probably anybody watching or reading would appreciate as well, so. Yep, right.
Um. There is a response. There is a spot in the written comment that will be included in the writ or in the audit report where you guys can give. Your response to it. If you guys have a response to give, it's completely optional. If you guys have a response to give, it's completely optional, but if you have one to give. Um, I can certainly include it.
Yeah, I, I, and I think we would probably give that after you, you folks meet. Um, and I, you know, I think it'd be really important actually for us to, to record a, a response.
Moving back to the management letter, the next finding that we had that we thought was. Had enough merit to be discussed with you guys is the internal accounting controls for financial reporting. There is a typo on this letter, I do have a correct copy for your guys' records. It bothers me. Essentially, there was enough. Material statements that we had to correct that we felt it would be. Thought that we should bring it to your guys' attention. Most of our adjustments had to do with. Um, there's a new statement that was required to be presented starting in twenty twenty. And most counties haven't been doing it correctly. Um, and then with your guys' s. Decision to use to, uh, use the ARPA dollars for general, general fund. Um, salaries and benefits, we just combined the ARPA fund back into the general fund. So we had some adjustments for that. Other than that, it's. Presenting fund balance in that position. Breaking it out to larger ones as their own separate line items for. Disclosure and transparency. On the face of the statements, they're all broken out in the notes. Beyond that, most of the adjustments we had were moving revenue from one line item, from one line item. From one line item to another, which. That's just for proper reporting, it's. Carrie and I are going to discuss that to make sure that we can fix that going forward. All the information's being presented, it's just getting presented properly now. Is there any questions on that item? Okay, and then the final item to bring to you guys' attention. There were three meeting minutes that were not published in the legal newspapers. Um, off the top of my head, I know that one meeting wasn't published in either paper. And then two other ones were not published in one or the other. The month of March is ringing off the top of my head, but I'm not sure I can provide the dates in the meetings, but. At the end of the day, it's just going forward, we just gotta make sure that we're getting them published. And I know that you guys have been having difficulties with the one newspaper.
We did until they sold out the new owners have been very good, but the previous ones were really hit and miss.
Yep, so I don't think. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I don't think this will be an issue going forward, but it's just something that happened during the audit period that needed to be noted. And then. Um, there are other less significant items that we just discussed with department heads. Small like. Do this instead of that or.
Need a motion to accept the.
Well, I, I think we, we need to see it in writing before we accept it. Or.
I do not have a copy of the, of the audit report draft that. Um, my supervisor who is in Platt puts it together, so.
I think you guys usually just do the motion to sign the letter, which you've already done.
Yep.
And then a report comes later.
Yeah. So. Well, thank you for your feedback.
You're welcome. That's what I'm here for. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
You. On the publishing, it was just with the second newspaper that was okay in the plane talk then?
There was one where I must have not sent it to the papers.
I see.
But because neither one, we could find where we published, but the other one, I think it was that other paper.
Yes.
So.
Right.
Well, I will be at the auditorium as well if you guys have any more questions or anything like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further business?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
So motion to adjourn in a second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.